Council for the Department of Health and Mental Health of the City of New York. Here today at the table is Christopher Boyd, the Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Environmental Sciences and Engineering, and Trevor McProud, who is a city research scientist in that bureau. We are here today for a public hearing on whether the department should adopt a new Chapter Eight Cooling Towers of Title 24 of the Rules of the City of New York. The Notice of Intention to adopt this chapter was published in the City Record on December 3rd, 2015. A copy of the first page of the Notice of Intention has been provided to the reporter to include in the record. Persons wishing to speak at the hearing were asked to pre-register, and we have also indicated that the record is open for anyone who wishes to add his or her name to the list of speakers. Four people have asked to speak at the hearing. We will just call upon you in the order which you signed up, and please be advised that you have five minutes. If you have any written comments, you may submit the written comments now, or you may submit them at any time up to 5:00 PM today. The first person who signed up to speak is Matthew Farrell. Is Mr. Farrell here? Mr. Farrell, if you represent a company or an agency of some sort, please provide your affiliation and your title for the reporter. And please speak there, and you can turn the mic on. It'll turn red, and it will be live. Spell your name, too, please.
Matthew Farrell, M.A.T.T.H.E.W., Farrell, F.A.R.R.E.L. I represent Tower Tech Cooling Towers, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. The new rules do a good job of addressing best practices for routine maintenance, inspection, and operation of water treatment. However, there is no meaningful inclusion of minimum cooling tower design requirements that can eliminate much of the root cause feeding, breeding, and spreading of Legionella from cooling towers. We posted comments on this on the New York City webpage, and we'll follow up in writing later on today. There's three items I'd like to mention. Tower design must have features that reduce the feeding of Legionella. Eliminating algae with a four-strafed design or reducing scale with an antimicrobial filmeter and drift eliminators will greatly help reduce Legionella. Tower designs must have features that reduce potential breeding, meaning basins with a flow-through design, meaning sloping towards the sink, or having sweepers installed in them. Additionally, promoting of 304 or 316 stainless steel, NF RP, construction with compatible piping material will also reduce corrosion, which is a breeding ground for Legionella. Tower designs must contain drift emissions of 0.001%, so that the majority of spreading Legionella is eliminated. Those are the three main comments I wanted to make tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next person, the next person who has... Mr. Beckenstein, Steve Beckenstein?
Yes.
Just a second, some people have come in. Gentlemen, if you wish to speak at the hearing, please sign up on the signup sheet over there. Everybody settle down. Sorry, Mr. Beckenstein. Press the mic.
Red is good.
Red is good.
All right, Steve Beckenstein, President Ambient Water Consulting, Inc. We submitted 21 separate comments concerning the regulations that were described. I'm not going to go through these because you already have them in written form. There's just a few things that jump out at our group, so to speak, and that is the requirement that this plan be in place by March 1st. It's now June, it's now January 4th. There are over 5,000 cooling towers that have been registered, not sure the exact number, but over 5,000 plans might be required. The industry itself, and I'll speak for the water treatment consulting segment, there's only a handful of consulting companies that specialize in this work. There are others that are willing to do it, but are not really qualified to do it. Case in point, there is one company that claims to be able to do this online without ever being present in the building. I don't see how that's even possible. But the fact that over 5,000 plans need to be done, completed, and on-site March 1st creates an environment for substandard plans. From the water treatment consulting world, my firm has eight people, and we're located in New York, close proximity to New York City. There aren't other partners. Once you get past our firm, you end up with a firm that's in Boston, you end up with one that's in Chicago. They have representation locally, but the big picture here is that the time allowed will not allow for a good plan to be in place on March 1st, given the fact that we still don't know what the rules are. And we're not set up, no one here is set up to pump out plans, no one's thought about these plans until now. There's no infrastructure for it. That's not to say that there won't be plans on somebody's, at somebody's cooling tower on the point-to-date, but I don't believe there'll be very good plans. Also, there's a requirement for a qualified person to carry out the plan. Who trains these people, I'd like to know? How do they get trained by March 1st? If that's the intent. There are people that have the potential to be qualified people, but they're not going to be qualified people without training. We provide that training, so do the water treatment companies, but it's a time-based event. There's a lot here that the engineering group that maintains the towers have good understanding of, but it's quite complex, and now it's a legal issue as far as implementing the plan and not tripping over the 30 separate violations that one could encounter. So all this training has to take place by March 1st, once you have the plan. The plans have to be in place, and they have to be implemented under the pressure of fines and legal issues. By and large, the owners of these properties are more than willing to comply and spend the money to do so. They need the time to do so. They need the time for their people to be trained. They need a good plan by a qualified individual that understands cooling equipment, understands how these systems flow and work, and knows how the employees, the qualified people, need to be trained and implement that training. I think this whole project is very timely and very well thought out. It's just needs to have enough time to be implemented in accordance with the projected outcome of Legionella prevention and not just having a plan in place. So, you know, in regard to the plans, what we've asked for in our submission is an extension of how that comes to be. So there's enough time to produce an accurate plan, enough time to train people to implement the plan. So, you know, that's kind of a big picture. There's also a few interesting items in that when you get down to the cooling tower itself, there's a statement that requires the elimination of sunlight. That's an impossibility in the design of these cooling towers. Some do, some don't. It depends on the type of cooling tower, induced draft cooling tower, forced draft cooling tower, you know, have different structures. You can't retrofit everything out there. There's no time to re-engineer cooling equipment. So we have a great concern about how intrusive these regulations are into design and implementation of a real-world system. There's also, and I'll go on to another subject, the issue of heterotrophic plate counts, dip slides, and Legionella test results. There's an indication here that if the heterotrophic plate count is greater than 200,000, that severe steps have to be taken with disinfection, almost as though there were Legionella present, and yet there's no known correlation between heterotrophic plate counts and Legionella counts. But it is well-known that the higher the bacteria count, the more possibilities you have, the greater potential you have for Legionella bacteria to exist. But it's not uncommon to get a heterotrophic plate count that exceeds 200,000 and have zero or near zero Legionella. It's not uncommon at all. So now you've created a situation where perhaps you have a data center that's running 24/7, 365, that really can't just turn the switch off on a $200,000, a $200,000 CFU plate count when it's not really a condition that requires a severe reaction. It requires a reaction that which may have to do with just adjusting the biosign feed and retesting, certainly not disinfecting or cleaning, for that matter. There are numerous other areas similar to that that require unusual conditions. For instance, on-manned cooling towers and a seven-day testing requirement. It's not clear to me how that's feasible, where you have, and I'll give you an example of a multiple cooling tower, multiple building environment. If you look at bank, branch banks that are operated by a central engineering staff, and they may have 20 or 30 cooling towers throughout the city, they don't have any way of even getting someone trained between now and the required date to now somehow touch on all of these cooling towers seven days a week when there's automation that does that. So if there is anything that would create some, some way to implement seven-day testing, it's with automation, it's not with people. And if that automation has communications, then you're pretty well, you can pretty well assume that you will be identified, that a condition such as low conductivity or high conductivity will be identified via communications. So that's an alternate to firsthand testing. In any case, in any environment, seven days a week is an unusual requirement. And again, I have to stress, if somebody has to be trained and be a qualified person for all of these 5,000-plus cooling towers, it's possible to do it, but is it possible to do it and do it correctly in a short period of time? I think, in my opinion, is no. And I've been in this for 40 years. We have hundreds and hundreds of cooling tower clients. We know their people intimately, we have same clients for 20 and 30 years. I don't have a sense that there's sufficient time to properly implement this requirement of a plan and a qualified person to carry out that plan. We're all responsible parties, that's the easy part. The qualified implementing individual needs to be properly trained in how to do it, what to do, and they're willing to be trained, and they're capable of being trained, but not in weeks and months. It may take six months to get this done correctly. So I appreciate the ability to be able to speak, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Steve Rosario.
It's Robinson, members of the hearing panel. For the record, my name is Stephen Rosario, I'm Senior Director, Northeast Region for the American Chemistry Council. We represent business of chemistry and plastics industry here in New York, in my region and throughout the United States. I appreciate the opportunity to submit a couple of verbal comments. A colleague of mine, Dr. Christine McGinnis, has submitted formal written comments as well. As we all know, the recent outbreak of Legionnaires' disease in New York City has highlighted how important it is to have good regulations, such as the ones that are being included and being discussed here today. While we generally support the regulations and the importance of ensuring greater safety of our water supply and the elements of a cooling tower, there are two concerns that we have. The major concern deals with the exclusion of non-oxidizing biocides and the heavy emphasis and over-reliance on oxidizers. The proposed rules are effectively narrowing the choice of biocides available to the professionals. By requiring a daily measurement of free and total residuals, the professionals must use oxidation reduction potential, which is really only used with oxidizers. The only alternative is to be physically present. You heard the previous speaker about some of the challenges in terms of needing a deadline here, it would be nearly impossible to have a physical presence. Consequently, the cooling tower operators will need to add relatively high uses of bleach and other strongly oxidizing chemistry to cooling towers. For the record, we also represent those who make chlorine that go into bleach, so I'm not here to beat up on that particular chemistry. But these chemistries can have an adverse reaction with organic materials. While oxidizing biocides are clearly an important part of the water treatment plan, other non-oxidizing biocides are frequently used, and these have been recognized by U.S. EPA under FRIFRA, which directly mentions the control of Legionella in cooling towers. An oxidizer alone may not be enough to control Legionella in cooling water towers, and the use of biocides has not guaranteed the prevention. But the over-reliance on one over another seems to limit the potential for ensuring the greatest amount of safety to the public. The second issue concerns corrosion. We all know that whenever you add any chemistry, you have a reaction, and obviously corrosion in metals is one. We believe that corrosion rates and chemical compatibility are always important to consider when designing a waste water treatment program. Such programs that rely heavily on oxidizing biocides may be particularly susceptible to the high rates of corrosion. Therefore, in conclusion, we would strongly recommend that the department and the city of New York conclude non-oxidizing biocides as part of the rules to ensure the maximum amount of public safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next person would be Louis Ganji. If there's anybody else who has come in and wishes to speak, please sign up with the board, Danik. Spell it, please.
Good morning, my name is Louis Ganji, I'm a consultant for dripping wet water. We're based out of San Antonio, Texas. We're a manufacturer of high-quality chlorine dioxide units. We have the, in reviewing the proposed changes in the ordinances and the regulations, there are some, there were some concerns from our part from a manufacturing standpoint, as far as from the participation of the equipment and the methodology used. There is a question that can come into play here as far as from an insurability standpoint. As a manufacturer, we have to make sure that we have adequate insurance, not only from our standard liability, but assuming more liability with, that this situation can occur. So I think that there should be some type of insurance qualification of participants in this nature. The reason why I speak to this, being an international firm, we have, from our customers, our client's standpoint, there's been a number of lawsuits as far as from negligence, as far as whenever an outbreak does occur, you're doing your best available technology and best available practices to prevent it, but still, if there is an outbreak, it does leave that option. The next question that we have is the efficacy of the different biocides. One of the key components in the regulation was biofilm versus HBC and Legionella counts. It eludes in the paragraphs biofilm, but it doesn't say anything about as far as what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. They do have into the, in the proposed regulations changes that you can use online biofilm indicators. But our question is, is that based upon our experience, no biofilm will equal no Legionella. So what is an acceptable level of biofilm? The next issue that we have with the regulations, this is good from a cooling tower standpoint, refer to the ASRAT 188, 2015 standard, does not take into play the potable water systems. We have an equal amount of systems for potable water versus the cooling water, and there's more chance or susceptibility to being exposed to Legionella in potable water systems. My question is, I know we're trying, you're trying to take this in phases, but is there going to be any questions as far as going after the tightening up the potable water standards in these buildings? The, flip over to the page here. Again, the next question goes back in, it's been parenthesized, what is the qualifications of a responsible person? Even though you haven't, you haven't articulated out, there are qualified people that have years of experience, but not, may not have exactly industrial hygiene, and I want to make it experience per se, and we were, what our concern is, is not eliminating anyone that doesn't meet the exact headings that you have inside the paragraphs. Again, I appreciate the opportunity today to make these comments, and I think you're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ganji, do you want to submit any written comments?
Yes.
You will submit them also?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no other persons signed up to speak. Is there anybody else here who wishes to speak? If not, then the hearing will be adjourned, probably for an hour. So we will go off the record now.
So what happens after an hour?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the records, Title 28, and there are four people who have signed up for comments. First person is Kevin Battaglini.
Kevin, do it.
Kevin Battaglini. Diane Miskowski.
Yep.
Are you Kevin?
I am.
Okay, you're first.
Don't talk with your mouth full.
Do you want to wait?
No, I'm good.
Spell it, please.
Spell it?
Yeah.
Battaglini, B.A.T.T.A.G.L.I.N.I., first name Kevin. Sit down.
Yes.
So, part of our concerns that we've had, and I know that we've, Kevin Battaglini from Chemocore, I know we sent in some email questions, has to do as much with the regulations requiring the physical daily testing in many of the sites, or all the sites, and the ability to accurately do that in buildings that have either limited staff or just don't have the overall staff to be able to complete it, definitions of what are going to be required for those daily tests, how frequently those tests actually have to be run. There was some mention from talking to Chris in regards to the possibility of having automation be able to substitute for that. In the event that automation is an acceptable means of covering those daily tests, how does the automation have to be defined, recorded in the book, what has to, how frequently does that have to be updated in the eyes of somebody who's going to come in and do an inspection? And the plan dictates that there's automation that provides some daily testing procedures done through the automated system, how do those, those get defined as a record for inspector to qualify? Is one of the areas that, that's definitely what's going to be the reaction protocol if in fact there is remote operation, such as that where a piece of equipment is reporting out some detailed information, what becomes the reaction, the acceptable reaction protocol to if in fact that automation reports something that's below? to if, in fact, that automation reports something that's below a defined quantity? And then so, and then how does that get, is that going to be clearly defined if, in fact, that becomes a, an acceptable definition by the city as per the regulations? How does that get defined? Because I think there's going to be some level of interpretation, and as you talked to, Chris had mentioned, we'll put it to plan, what specifically has to be in the plan. And if you write it in the plan, but it doesn't meet the expectations of the city or the inspector, is that going to warrant a fine? And so echoing on some of the things that Stephen mentioned about the March 1st deadline to produce these plans, if, in fact, automation is going to be an acceptable means, which is not defined in the current regulations, the expectation is that the customer's going to have a significant financial investment and overhead and expenditure to facilitate that. And then how does that, how do we write the plan now? Because these plans, they're not something that can be written in a day. They're going to take a couple of weeks. So do you devise a plan for March 1st, even though it might not even be realistic that those automation requirements can be met? If that's the intention of the customer to go through an automated approach because they don't have the manpower and staff currently to meet the requirements of daily testing, how do they approach that? And if they, if they're one of the lucky ones, they get inspected on March 3rd, and they don't have those requirements met, are they going to be fined? So some of our protocol, even in the area of defining the, the plan defines something such as on the weekly, requiring weekly bacteria tests. Stephen mentioned something about the number of 200,000. How do you define that? There is no cultureable test that you're going to do on site through any of the dipslides that are going to define a 200,000 again. So if you do any standard dipslide, if you want to do a culture test to define that, it typically is going to take longer than seven days to get those results back if you do them in a lab. So by the time you take the sample, send it off to the lab, the lab analyzes it, cultures it, the culture itself in the lab is usually five to seven days, and then the reporting process back. So the 200,000 count is not even a definable count via using a dipslide. There is no means to define that. The reaction protocol asking for two consecutive tests that come above, if, in fact, you have a definable amount, which is probably going to be a million as you record it off the dipslide, if, in fact, you had that definable amount, the turnaround time on two consecutive tests is improbable that you'll be able to move the needle. So if you did a dipslide on Monday, read it on Wednesday, which is a 48-hour incubation time, made adjustments to that, the expectation is you may or may not have enough reaction time to greatly affect, and your next reading may, in fact, still be above the defined limit, which would then trigger a protocol. So in a well-defined program, a program that's meeting the expectations and happens to have, for some reason, a accelerated count for some period of time, a two-week turnaround before you have to physically go to a disinfection protocol. From a field standpoint, it's not, it's not, you can't, it's not, the expectation is that you're not really going to, there's a possibility, I'm not saying the expectation, that you could make industry-standard recommended adjustments to a count above 2,000, and if you test again, which amounts to be four days after you got your reading back, that there would not be enough contact time to accurately move the needle, which then, if the customer is recording those results correctly, would be under a protocol and that would give disinfection. So I'm sure there's other questions. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miskowski?
Thank you very much. I'm Diane Miskowski, I'm National Legionella Program Manager for EMSL Analytical. EMSL is a nationwide network of laboratories, and we have 14 CDC Elite Legionella Proficient Labs, three in New York State. My concern is including heterotrophic plate counts via dipslides and having a regulatory basis behind that. Particularly with the dipslides, it's a qualitative test. There are orders of magnitude difference. You can get an order of magnitude less than the actual count, or an order of magnitude higher than the actual count. The procedures for manufacturing those dipslides are not regulated, meaning the manufacturing process differs from batch to batch. The actual recipes for the auger that's used in those dipslides vary from manufacturer to manufacturer. They all claim that they're using, well, most claim that they're using nutrient auger, but when you look at the recipes for the nutrient auger, they're all different. Some of the dipslides even use buffer charcoal yeast extract auger to determine heterotrophic plate counts. So since a dipslide is so highly variable and uncontrolled, it seems to me that there's a lot of potential liability having a regulatory number associated with an HPC. If you want to use dipslides for operational control, that's fine. I just question the regulatory basis behind the HPC. Again, there's no correlation whatsoever between a heterotrophic plate count done by a standard methods culture procedure and Legionella. And as was stated previously, you can get a non-detectable result with a heterotrophic plate count and still have high Legionella numbers. My other concern, it's widely recognized that most of the cases of Legionnaires' disease actually come from potable water systems and not cooling tower systems. And I believe that your regulation is a good first step, but I would like you to consider at some point in time, perhaps, rolling in some of the potable water, rooftop potable water storage tanks into the program. The epidemiology is different. Obviously, outbreaks that are associated with cooling towers get more of the press because you have more people getting sick at a finite period of time. Those people getting sick from potable water systems are sporadic cases over a longer period of time. It's things that the press don't pick up. So the media attention is greater with cooling towers, but the health risk is actually higher with potable water systems. The other, the other definition, I think, that the, you say that for a culture test for Legionella, you want Legionella species. It is, in a private conversation that I've had with the CDC people, they believe that Legionella pneumothelus serum type 1 is getting unnecessarily focused on when there are many other species, as well as serum types of Legionella pneumothelus that are responsible for Legionnaires' disease. So in, in the regulation, when it's finalized, perhaps if you could define what you mean by Legionella species, it would eliminate some grade points for the laboratory. We can determine individual species for the 10 most commonly found species that cause Legionnaires' disease in the U.S., but if you could define those, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Barba.
Sure. Wait.
No, you had it, you just turned it off.
Oh, it's on.
Good.
Good morning. Al Barba, B-A-R-B-A, company I represent is at U.S. Water Services. My company provides water treatment programs for cooling towers throughout the United States, and obviously here in New York City as well. I wanted to talk about two items, two, two issues with the law as stated. First, I want to also state that I appreciate the opportunity to talk, and that the legislation that you're putting in place is, is well-founded in the fact that it's trying to prevent what happened this past summer from happening again. That's obviously the main goal of this. But the two concerns that I have are, first is the timing of the implementation of the plans. I know we've heard a few other speakers speak about that, March 1st, and we understand that that's been in the law since August, but with the, with the changes since August to the requirements, and obviously they're still not finalized, since we're here having a discussion about them today, it'll be difficult to have cooling tower owners within the city of New York implement, produce and implement those plans in a quality way by March 1st. That was one point I wanted to make. The second point I wanted to make is with regard to the specifics of daily testing, and it has been discussed here as well. Daily testing, while we understand that the goal there is to assure that oxygen levels are being maintained in these cooling systems, and that will lead to a safer environment within these cooling towers, but daily testing by personnel will be a manpower challenge for many of the, many cooling tower owners in New York City, and without the automation ability to do that, it'll be difficult to implement. So my request to the, to the DOH is that you clarify what automation will be accepted as part of, a part of law. It's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Gardner Jackson.
Hello, I'm Gardner Jackson, and I represent NALCO, an ECO Lab company. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to speak publicly about the proposed rule. We have submitted in writing some material already and look forward to the response on that. In addition, I would like to say a few things, and some of them will be repetitive, but I also think they bear repeating, because the more times that you hear them, it may be beneficial to you in understanding how the industry is looking at this. So first, the March 1st deadline, which is hard and fast, as I understand, it's in law. The rule, the rule not being finalized will put everyone who is tasked with writing the maintenance plans for the cooling towers at a disadvantage. So whatever, whatever you ultimately do, I would just urge you to quickly, quickly come out with your ruling so that folks that are preparing these plans have the time to do a good job with them and get them in place and have them ready for March 1st. I agree with Mr. Beckenstein, who spoke previously, that if there were any way to move that back, it would be helpful for everyone. As far as daily checks go on the cooling tower, it's specifically what is called for is water quality parameters, including but not limited to pH, temperature, conductivity and biocide residual, free and total, must be measured and recorded at least once each day when the cooling tower system is operating. I think this is a point of confusion and also a challenge to many of the systems out there. Many of the cooling tower systems out there today are in buildings where there is not daily staffing of engineers to, to do the monitoring required. It has been indicated that daily testing physically on site may not be required, and some form of automation may substitute. I, I think that that would be useful and wise, and what I would just suggest is that the requirement for that be clarified further when you propose, when you, when you finalize the rule. And specifically would suggest that what you're really trying to accomplish is to identify whether or not biocide feeds are occurring. Really validating that is occurring is what the goal should be. You're doing weekly bacteria testing to confirm control. So if that's the case, my suggestion would be having conductivity and ORP be the, be the parameters that, that should be monitored remotely, and some way of determining that the biocide feed has occurred, like an ORP spike that can be validated, be a substitute for the daily testing, because really what you're trying to identify is that the biocide feed has occurred. pH, temperature, and total chlorine are measurements that are not easily controlled by the chemistry of the system, and I don't think that they add a lot of value to the daily testing requirement. So I would ask that you consider those, and whether or not they, they really need to be in there. And finally, would just like to ask on behalf of everyone here, if you could today, give us any sort of sense of when you, you see the rule being finalized, I think that we would all appreciate that. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has not spoken who would like to speak? The record is open.
Actually, ask another question?
To put on the record?
Sure.
Okay, quickie.
In regards to one of the topics that Gardner brought up regarding the daily testing and recording free and total halogen levels, is that indicate that there's an expectation that the halogens, the oxidizing biocides, are going to need to be fed on a daily basis? So if the standard protocol then changes from the industry standard for most, for the most part, is to feed it on a three-day week cycle, alternating days, is that indicating that we should be, we're feeding that product, or whatever oxidizing choice is, daily so that there is a recordable residual? Because on the days it doesn't feed, there'll be no, there should be little or no recordable residual in the cooling tower.
Thank you.
So I assume that needs to be defined as well. Thanks.
Thank you. It is now 11:48. Is there anybody else who wishes to say anything? If not, then I will close the hearing. Thank you.